I think I saw everybody here. Yep. Yep, and I've got you, you and you. Perfect. And so I will make a motion to open the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
All right. Um. Oh, that's right. Sorry. Remote access policy was under the under public comments. My apologies. My brain.
Well, then I apologize. I'm sorry. There you are.
No, no, it was me. It was me. All right. So as a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David.
Yes.
Uh.
Yes.
Yep. Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am here as well. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg. I see you.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes.
All right. And I know there are others that will be joining us, but I do see them as well. Um. So, good evening. This is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of all of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference, and accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured in the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except for any executive session materials, are available on board docs. Like I've said before, you go to the town website, go to Selectmen, go to pack it for tonight, and that brings up board docs, and that's where you can follow along. We recommend that the members and public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. All right. So we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the public comments. Do I have any public comments this evening? Okay. All right. The next is going to be the acceptance of minutes. So, um. Does anyone have any comments regarding the minutes? All right. I will, I'll accept a motion if someone would like to make one.
I make the motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
I second it.
You have to state the date, uh, Armand. Armand, say that you have to state the date.
Well, what was it? September 7?
September 2nd.
2nd.
And I
I'll second that.
Okay. Are you a second? Um, all in favor? David?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris? Chris is nodding his head yes, and I am a yes as well.
Is Chris frozen? I can't, is Chris frozen on there?
No, 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 no. He nodded. He's muted.
He's not frozen in time?
No, he's moving on my screen.
Oh, there he is.
Not on mine.
He's moving.
Now he's moving.
All right. Next, we're gonna move on to item three, which is correspondences. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding correspondences A through H? Anything in particular?
A quick question for Greg, if I may. Greg, relative to the Sterling Golf contract, kind of surprised to see that they're only looking for a one-year extension, but uh, when will we have any discussions with them? Do you have a timetable at all?
I don't. I don't yet. But, um, but I, I feel the same. Justin and DeMarco, the DPW director, and I discussed this briefly the other day about if, if we thought of a one-year contract versus just negotiating for a whole new three contract, three-year contract. Or beyond that, we'd have to go to town meeting for more than three years, but you know, all options on the table. We're willing to talk about it. So, no, I, I haven't, I haven't talked to Sterling Golf as to why, what their preference may be. But I have it on my list of things to discuss, you know, like a little further what we're gonna do and then. So if, if anyone on the board has any input, shoot me an email. Don't, don't copy the rest of the board. Email and about, about, you know, thoughts to it or, or one way or the other, but
Yeah, but I also think with what they're dealing with right now, there, it's maybe, it's not something that, in my opinion, is not an urgent thing. So that's just me.
Well, it depends on what the, what the, the, um, when does their current contract expire? And if, you know.
Yeah, I think they have one more year. So I think they want to do, I think
They have another year.
Yeah. But they're pretty, they're pretty receptive. Whenever, whenever we talk to them about, about, you know, whatever the matter is at hand, they're pretty receptive. I mean, I think they're a good business partner for what it's worth. So Justin and I will kind of come up with what, if there's any terms, we might want to adjust and then see how they, see how they feel about it. But I'll, when I set up a meeting on form the board and
And we're still, we're still working on their roof issue.
Yeah, they need money. So, uh, but for the, for the, for the awareness of the public, what we're talking about is Sterling Golf Management, and they, they have a, they have an agreement with the town. They, they basically lease the golf course from the town, the, the town owns Bainer Golf Course. And, um, but their leasing, their leasing agreement can be summarized in that whatever revenue they take in, they, they pay the town. Uh, but the point is to kind of keep the revenues for the, for the purposes of maintenance and upkeep and capital improvements to the golf course itself. And so, uh, the roof is a significant capital investment, and it seems needed for the, specifically for the for the facility for the, for the country club. But the count on aging is, is also in the country club and, and the, and in non-COVID times, the golf course, uh, got revenue through, uh, facility rentals, uh, for the use of the country club. So it kind of behooves us to help them fix the roof. Considering, you know, for the mutual beneficial benefits.
And just pointing out on the memo, it does say that it's, um, they're requesting the extension beginning January 1st, 21 through December 31st, 21. So it would just be this next year.
Yeah. So I appreciate them kind of letting us know a couple of months ahead of time. That's good.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Anything regarding the correspondences? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
To accept correspondence as presented.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes also. All righty. Uh, looks like we have one item on the consent agenda. Is use of property, town property, um, for Metro West Kung Fu again. Does anybody have any questions?
Nothing substantially different about this one.
Not, not really. I mean, they're using the same, same location, no?
Yep. I think business is good and they want to expand. Elliot, are you, Elliot, are you on? I don't think he is.
The, the one question I had was, and I know, I think that Ms. Tricia had talked, had said that she would reach out to Elliot because that's a
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Both use it on Saturdays.
Yeah. And so I appreciate you bringing that up because that's, um, that's something I want to make sure they were working together. So when Ms. Tricia had requested it, the first thing I did is I said, just give a quick call over to Elliot to make sure it's gonna be, so I understand they're, they still have that same understanding.
Perfect. Anyone else? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Jeff, you seconded. Okay. All in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Item number five, use of town property. Greg, do you want to give us a little overview?
Yeah. Well, maybe just as an introduction, we have on Lauren Bell here. Um, he represents the asset that co-op market. And, um, they have some, some news. I'll let him share, uh, but they, they want to be able to get a little more, you know, they want to be able to allow the community to support their advocacy and their, and their campaign and, and marketing and whatnot. So they're asking to use that little sliver of land next to the rail trail and between the, the north parking lot of the mill and then the, the rail trail. That's my, about where my understanding is that they want to use. And being that it's town property, they need the selectmen to approve it. So, um, but they just want to set up signage. So Lauren, uh, you wanted to say anything else or what's, what's your plan? What are you trying to do?
Um, yeah, that, that's precisely it. We're, we're really just doing a, a free yard sign pickup. Uh, last weekend, we did one at the Elks Club in their, uh, parking lot. Uh, and I, I'd like to, uh, set it up, uh, on that little sliver of land next to the Maynard Farmers Market this Saturday from, from 10 to 1. And I actually had reached out to Carol of the Farmers Market, but because of all the restrictions around food and everything, and because of everything they had to do to get in place, you know, their whole, uh, COVID safe system there, uh, they said it, it just wouldn't work with the setup and the vendors they already have, but uh, Carol suggested I reach out to you guys about potentially using the sliver of green space, uh, between the rail trail and the parking lot itself.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Lauren?
No, I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
No, and congratulations, Lauren, on the, uh, announcement.
Yeah, thank you. We, um, we haven't publicly announced yet. Um, we hope to do that this weekend. We, um, so, you know, there are several owners, co-op owners on this, uh, call. So you all know where we're gonna be. So hopefully you're excited about it. And, um, uh, but yeah, we hope to publicly announce, uh, hopefully on Saturday, uh, if not a few days thereafter, but that'll go uh, out to, um, the world. So it's been a long time coming and, uh, uh, we are pretty psyched to be able to have a co-op in Maynard, uh, and, uh, and all the, yeah, I've spoken with you guys over the years so much and so many of you have been so supportive. So I, we're, this is very exciting for 1,365 member owners and counting from 40 towns who are going to be coming to town to shop here at a full-service grocery store that sources local food from dozens of local farms. So, um, and, and we own it and we control it and profits stay local. So uh, this is gonna be a game changer in town. This is just a sign pickup though on Saturday.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the use of town property by the asset that co-op market near the asset that rail trail in vicinity to the mill and main north pond parking lot abutting Main Street between September 12th and 26, 2020.
I second that.
Excellent. Uh, all in favor? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So congratulations, Lauren. Good luck this weekend.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you. Um, I gotta go put the kids down, but thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night. All right. Moving on to item six, the local licensing authorization. Greg, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, this is pretty just procedural. So as the licensing authority, you approve, the Board of Selectmen approve changes of, you know, any sort of, not any, but most of the details of the dynamics of the liquor license. So 110 Grill recently opened. This is to kind of be expected, especially at the opening of a restaurant where they might have a change in hands of, of management or staff or whatnot. So this is just changing the, this, the manager's name on the license itself to Stephen Melendez. Yeah.
All right.
Do you have anything to add? I'm sorry.
No, 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 not a problem. Do we normally, for this type of thing, do we normally see the manager? No? Yes?
Perhaps you do. Mr. Melendez, do you happen to be on the phone? Becky, did you try to reach out to, to Stephen?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. He's actually on duty tonight. So, um, he couldn't be with us tonight. I apologize for that. No, no problem. I just wanted to make sure and, and you know, that's no problem.
No, you're right. We, we tried to invite anybody that's listening, but I, that's a good point.
Does, um, anybody have any questions for Greg or Becky regarding this? All right. Then I will entertain a motion for this.
Um. Jeff, you look like we were ready. Go ahead.
Go ahead, David.
No, you look like you were ready. You were, your mouth was getting ready to move. So go ahead.
Motion to approve application for liquor license change and manager for 110 Grill, Nine Digital Way, Maynard Crossing to Stephen Melendez.
A second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. All right. Uh, next we're going on to item number seven, uh, subordination agreement for refinancing. Greg?
Yep. No, this is, this is kind of complicated, but, um, for, I mean, I did my, I did my best to try to describe it in the public comments in the summary. And this doesn't come up very often, but years ago, uh, the town was kind of partnered with the community development block grant program, uh, to give money for homeowners to do renovations to their homes. Uh, but that money then kind of becomes part of the mortgage, so to speak, that needs to be, you know, But that money then kind of becomes part of the mortgage, so to speak, that needs to be, you know, if that they don't have to pay back unless it's within unless they sell the house within 20 years. And so in this case, this this particular homeowner wants to refine it, refinance, as as many people are doing these days. But we just have to make sure that the the lien, so so to speak, like that agreement that they're not going to really sell the house unless they pay back that that home renovation money, that it stays with the mortgage. So it's I'm I'm greatly watering down a lot of paperwork in real estate law, but that's that's the root of it. And so as as the authority that you are, the executive of the town, you you have to approve that sort of refinancing that, but make sure that stays. You know, that agreement stays with the mortgage.
Greg, I'm not opposed to this at all. I actually support it. The question I have is just it's out of curiosity, within the last 12 years, it was probably within the last eight years. We actually approved a couple of these CBD G grants for home improvements. Do you know if these happen to be if this happens to be one of those or does this date back further than that? Do you know? I'm just curious.
That's a great question.
It goes back to 2006. This one.
This one goes back to 2006?
Yes. So it's in the it's in the
It's in the agreement.
Content. Yeah, so
Okay, so this Yeah, this so this was even this was even before my time. There was there was another time we did a couple of these and they're they're very beneficial to the people who need them to in order in order to help them out. So I have no problem with it.
Anyone else have any questions? Or comments regarding this? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I will. I'll move to approve the subordination agreement relative to the original community development block grant, home improvement loan for the property at Five Durant Ave and further authorize the chair to execute same. And we also also will authorize the use of digital signatures if required.
All right.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Um. Greg, do we want to skip over?
Yeah, I recommend that because we're early. We have to wait until 7:30.
Yep, no worries. So we will skip over item eight for the moment and move on to nine of appointments. So the first one is going to be regarding Steve Jones. Chief, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. As most of you know, Lieutenant Stephen Jones retired last Friday, September 12th, on exactly his 32nd year anniversary with the department. He started September, well, September 11th in 1988, he started. And as many have done, he wishes to continue on as a special officer in the capacity to do details and roadwork assignments, so he can wean his way away from the department slowly, but that to do that, I highly recommend it. Steve is the third longtime officer retiring the last two months. That's 88 years of experience between the three of the officers. I was just checking the average age because Steve Kyle and Bill Duggan all retired. The average age drops seven years on the department. The three of them retiring because as many of you know, we just hired three officers and they're all very young, just out of college, 22 years old, so.
I don't feel that old.
The younger department, but I highly recommend Steve to be a special officer in town here and continue his service.
Great, thank you. I do want to congratulate Lieutenant Jones. Thank you very much for everything and and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor and privilege to work for the town of Maynard and I like to think I did the best I could and doing a good job for the department and the town.
Yeah, I would echo that, Steve. Congratulations on your retirement. You've my interactions with you have always been pleasant and you've always been a gentleman and you know, thank you very much for your dedication to the community. I do have a technical question for the chief. Is there any limitation on the number of special officers that you can have or is it unlimited?
It's unlimited, but it's limited to the amount of equipment we have. You know, usually we have anywhere between eight and 12. Somewhere in that range. And right now, we Steve will make 10. So it's right, right where we usually are.
Yeah, and you know, not that I dislike any of the other ones, but I would highly recommend it. Steve, take the role of any of the other ones if we had to kick one off. I'm joking.
Well, you're gonna be popular.
I'm joking. Not if I'm stopping his car in a road detail.
All right, anyone else have any questions, comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to appoint Steve Jones as a special officer in Maynard Police Department for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
And do I have a second? All right, Chris and Jeff. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am yes. All right, congratulations. Thank you. And you liked it so much, you came back.
You in town.
Can't get enough.
Hey, Chris, Justine, can I, since we have the chief on, because I think he's going to leave after this, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, probably.
It depends on what you're gonna ask.
I, yeah, I, since we have the chief on, it was probably going to come up at under the TA report from Greg in regards to the community officer. Can you fill us in a little bit on on that and how that's going to work from a budgetary standpoint? Because I love the idea, by the way, because that was some of the things that I had mentioned in the past. It's nice to have someone downtown. So how does that work from a from a budgetary standpoint?
Absolutely. Well, I I did take into account a few of the selectmen saying they wanted more of a downtown presence and that's one of the items I came up with the community officer. He'll at least be downtown for two to three hours a day walking when the weather is fine or but it'd be the liaison to the businesses. So be stopping in to different businesses all the time. Budgetary wise, it's actually a savings because of when Kyle left his budget, we put it, we had already negotiated that position to be changed from what Kyle was at the time. So it was, you know, the job duties and responsibilities, you know, have changed, I've added some to it. And it's actually about 5.92% less money for the position than it was before. So budgetary wise, it's less money, but there's going to be actually some more responsibilities to it.
Go ahead, David. What are you saying? So there's no additional stipend added on to that role?
No, it was actually lessened from what Kyle stipend was. It was it was brought down 5.9 something percent. I think it's 92, but it might be 93.
What's the risk of the union? What's the risk of the union saying that they want to be to to be a special position that has it has an additional stipend added on to it down the road?
David, at the last negotiations, this was anticipated that Kyle could leave any time. And when that position was left, this is what the position was going to be and created. So it was already negotiated, so that the unions already negotiated.
I missed a bit of your answer because my internet is kind of shaky. I assume that from what I gathered, you said at the last negotiation, it was negotiated that we understood that that Carl's position was going to be leaving and that this was sort of slid in, for lack of a better phrase. And the understanding is that it won't be negotiated again. Is that true?
Yes, it was already negotiated into this
Stipend next time.
Yeah, no, no, it was already negotiated in that the position was Carl's until he left and then this position was created after that. And it was already negotiated, so there's no new negotiations. And it and it actually is also
Budgetary standpoint, we don't have anything to worry about five years from now.
No.
I'm worried down, I'm worried the road that it becomes a budget drain that they say, oh, that has additional responsibilities, so therefore that officer should get more money. That would be my concern.
As I said, it was already negotiated. It it's already in the contract for this year.
In this contract, okay.
In this contract. It's been in there because Kyle could have left a few years ago, so it was always anticipated that when he left, his deposition would leave and a new position would be created and this this was our so it was all anticipated. The other part too is is that, you know, Kyle was a 36 year employee, so he had maxed out vacation time in six weeks. The employee that is taking the position only has two weeks vacation. So we save well, four weeks total because he gets to. So we save four weeks vacation also. So basically two months of work.
Thanks for the explanation, chief. And that's going to be a welcoming position. So I think everybody on downtown is going to be excited about having someone present there.
Yeah, and I it's already all announced to it. It's Officer Jimmy McGrath that's going to be taking that position.
Very nice.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so right, so we voted in every service also.
Chief, one last, one last thing, Justine, if I'm Justine, if I may, before before we move on. Chief, you may want to suggest that 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 officer Jimmy, who Jimmy, what's his last name?
McGrath.
That he McGrath, he contact like the president of the MBA so that they can make maybe make an arrangement to have him come to a meeting so that they see who he is right away. They can then get him in touch with, you know, the other members and everything else. And that way it's it's, you know, who he is right from the start.
Great minds think alike. I have a list of things and that is on one of the list. He's not going to start in the position until the three new officers are off field training, you know, because because the deposition is being left open until that time. So about first week in November is when he's going to be starting that. But that is on the checklist that he he is going to be doing is contacting the MBA and then the other made people that are in charge of the made businesses downtown.
Perfect.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, David. All right, so we will move on to capital planning committee appointment. And let's see. Greg, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. So the town charter has a capital planning committee, but for a couple of years, it was hard to get, you know, enough like volunteers to have it, you know, in accordance with the town charter description and charge. But we got a couple. And even though one had to resign for the selectmen's correspondence, we have, this will be four if you appoint these two today. So the the two so the two current members are John Mark and Douglas Adler. These two, so you're not replacing anybody. This is just trying to fulfill the the positions. This is John Conchola and Lindsay McConkey. I think they're they may both be on the call. So if you want to, if you want to have them introduce themselves, that'd be great.
Perfect. All right, I'm going to start with John, if you'd like to say a little about yourself.
Hi.
Sorry, I should have warned you.
It's fine, it's fine. I thought I was closer to the mute button than I was. Yeah, my name is John Conchola. I've lived here in Maynard for about, it'll be eight years this December. Really actually enjoy getting involved in the town. I haven't up till this point. My wife is far more energetic than I am and involved with certain committees. But I talking, talking with people, heard that there was an opening on the capital planning committee and I thought, you know, this is something I'd actually really be interested in to really help the town to make, you know, to keep fixing the sidewalks and, you know, the other big projects that come up. You know, this is it's something that I really like getting into that kind of aspect of the town. So eager to serve, happy to be here. Answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for John?
We get our list of questions ready yet?
Greg's slacking. Just kidding, just kidding. Anyone have any questions for John? Sorry, I'll say that one right now.
Sounds like Greg did a job in vetting the candidates. Right, Greg?
Oh, somewhat. I so I didn't have to head hunt John or or Lindsay. I'm actually really grateful that that I don't know how they heard of it. Now I'm just, I am curious about how they heard of the the vacancy, but because, you know, we haven't posted on the website. But, you know, if it's not at the top of the webpage, I don't know if people see the vacancies, but no, I'm grateful that John and Lindsay reached out to me. I and I was welcome to have it, you know, that they seem very capable.
I think I pointed John into the direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff definitely pointed me there.
I will say this, John, I see that you are an Army veteran. Thank you for your service and I'm very surprised that Greg pointed his finger in your direction, given his association with a different branch.
We need we need all the help we can get.
Oh, no.
Right before the fall.
All hands on deck. And actually, so there hasn't really been an opportunity for John or Lindsay to attend a meeting because they haven't really been meeting. Correct, Greg? So but hopefully with these two appointments, I know that the process is getting started anyways and and that will be happening sometime soon.
Yep, yep, we're going to be do the best we can, you know, and and my expectations are not so high. We just kind of wanted to see what the capital planning committee can do. Because this will be, yeah, their first year with a quorum. You know, in a couple of years. This is good.
All right. And so the next, if there's no other, no other questions for John, thank you, John. And I will turn to Lindsay, if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lindsay McConkey. I have lived in Maynard for just about four years with my husband and two little boys. My older son starts first grade tomorrow. And I originally am from this area. I work for Harvard Business School. And I'm interested in the committee. I actually, I think that all roads lead back to Jeff Swanberg. I heard about it from my neighbor, Chris Klein. And John Controlla is also my neighbor. We all live next to each other, so we'll make it easy. So I heard about the opening and I I'm also on the Maynard Cespa Centennial Committee and I've just enjoyed being involved in that committee and in planning. It's been a little bit thwarted by covid, but you know, we have some stuff coming up. And I just want to participate, similar to what John said. I I think it's important to participate in in town governance and administration in whatever way you can when you're a resident of a town. And this is a way that I think I can contribute meaningfully. And I I think, you know, my my professional background and personal sensibilities would benefit the committee.
Great, thank you. And also thank you for your help on the Cespa Centennial Committee. I know I've I've worked with you a little bit and and it's been great. And I think you're the you guys have that drive-in movie coming up on the
We do, we do in a couple of weeks. Yeah, and Greg has been really helpful with that. Greg and Justin DiMarco, several people in town. So I'm really thankful that it's such an active and helpful town staff and administration.
Well, just so you know that Greg is going to be relying on you guys to make sure that you give him some good directions, right, Greg?
What, the movie? What are you talking about?
No, 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 no.
Oh, the capital planning committee? Oh.
The movie?
No, no, I'm
The movie, yeah. Is it on consign? What's playing?
No, it's Back to the Future.
No, that one, okay.
No, no, but maybe maybe you are referring to the capital planning committee. I am thrilled about the capital planning committee and and John Markin is, you know, pretty well, pretty well versed in the in already. But yeah, no, I'm excited to have the partnership.
Excellent.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Lindsay? All right. Then hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to a point, we'll do one at a time. I'll move to a point, John Controlla with a term ending June I will move to a point, we'll do one at a time. I'll move to a point, John Controlla with a term ending June 30th, 2023 to the Capital Planning Committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And also with that, did you put the authorized use of digital signature stamp?
No, that can be an amendment. Yep.
Okay. And then I'll entertain a motion for Lindsay.
Maybe you want to do that, too?
No, you can go ahead.
All right. So I entertain a motion to appoint Lindsay McConkey with the term of June 30th, 2022 to the Capital Planning Committee and authorize the use of digital signature stamp if approved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Kristen, Jeff, tied. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for volunteering.
Yes, we look forward to working with you. All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And we have one, two more appointments. Moving on to Conservation Commission. Caitlin, I see that you're here.
Hi, thank you, Justine. So recently we had two members of the Conservation Commission stepped down from their appointments. And interesting enough, we actually had, I think it was either seven or eight people interested in joining the Conscom. And we've got Susan and Jeff here today. They have both attended, I think, at least two Conscom meetings. And they've also both been on site visits with me and the rest of the commission. And we're, you know, the Conscom's super happy with Jeff and Susan. And we actually voted to recommend them to, for appointment. And they're both here on the call now if you want to, if, if you guys want to introduce yourselves. And if the Select Board would like to ask them any questions.
Certainly. Okay. Thank you very much, Caitlin. Why don't we start with Jeff? I think I did see that you were on.
That's me.
Hi there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeff Black. Just moved to Maynard, actually. I think we, me and my wife moved in right after July 4th, so pretty new. It's been a couple of panic pandemic influenced months here in town, but loving it so far. So I guess a little bit of my background, my day job is a civil engineer. So I work for VHB. I work on the mostly private land development side of things. So I guess my, my day job is usually preparing things to submit to a Concom as opposed to being on the other side of it. But yeah, just, you know, being new in town, looking for a way to get involved. This seemed like it would be a good fit. Use my development powers for good, I guess, on the town side of things. So, yeah, that's, you know, one of the things that drew me to, you know, looking at Maynard. When, when I was looking around at, at houses was, you know, part of it was the, you know, the conservation aspect of the town and you know, being close to the river and all the open space that the town has, that was, that was a big plus. So figured found there was an opening, thought I'd throw my hat in the ring. So that's a little bit about me. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Sounds good. I think it's interesting to have the other side of it. So you'll be able to, you know, when you get submittals from years, you'll have an idea of, you know, what might be missing.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions for Jeff? Or how did you hear about, you heard about the opening through Caitlin?
Yeah, when I moved in, actually, it was actually kind of funny. For whatever reason, I had been looking at the town conservation website. You guys are pretty good at posting your drainage reports and stuff like that. So I've peeked at them a time or two just for my own, you know, knowledge. And I saw that they were looking for some numbers. So shot Caitlin an email and I work with, with Wayne Amico. Well, I don't work with him, but he, you know, same, same company, different departments. And, you know, he told me a little bit about the Concom here and decided to give it a go.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Jeff? All right. Well, then why don't we move on to Susan?
Hi there. Thank you for having me tonight at your meeting. I've lived in Maynard for six years now. And I grew up in Hudson and lived in West Concord. So I've lived on the ass of it for most of my life. And I just really love the diversity of like, there's a lot of different housing aspects in Maynard, but there's also a lot of conservation areas. I stole a page out of Jeff Swanborg's campaign thing this summer and I walked all the streets in Maynard because we weren't going to go on any other vacations. And it really gave me a great aspect for really like all the, the great conservation areas in town that I didn't know of. And I'm an educator. I write curriculum, science and social studies curriculum for the Western Public Schools. And I really believe in getting kids and families involved in protecting our natural resources. And I saw this on Facebook. There was like a, hey, interested in volunteering. And I've been looking for a way to give back to the town and become civically engaged. So I emailed Caitlin and, and here I am tonight. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It sounds, you know, obviously we love all of our volunteers, but we love, we love them even more when they, you know, are genuinely excited that they found it on the website and they, they all of a sudden decide that we don't have to ask them to come to us. They just decide they want to. Does anyone have any questions for Susan?
I have a question for Caitlin. If she, Caitlin, what do you think is the rationale for having such, you know, you know, seven applicants for the Conscom, which normally is not like one of the top, you know, people aren't always excited to get to the concert.
I think it's Caitlin.
No, I don't mean it in that way. You know what I mean? It's not, it's, it's not, it's not considered one of the, you know, the sexy ones that everybody wants to be on because of its excitement. What, what leads to, what do you think is generating?
Caitlin makes it exciting. That's why.
Yeah, I try. I, I think it's a combination of, you know, some of the things happening in the world today, especially in regards to environmental issues such as climate change. I feel like a lot more people on the local level are a little more connected than they were, say, ten, twenty years ago. Plus, you know, I do think on our Conservation Commission, you know, we try to, we, we do try to make things kind of fun and inclusive and make it also like an educational experience, not necessarily just for the commissioners, but also for any guests who come. So you know, I think a combination of that. And we're also trying to put together a kind of like a working project list for things such as trail improvement and that sort of stuff. So I think, you know, more people in town, especially being stuck at home, are more interested in, you know, these open spaces in town. And the timing worked out perfectly that, you know, we ended up with, you know, Susan and Jeff here with us to, you know, help further the commission in the town along.
And I hope we don't lose the other five that, that also had an interest because we need, we need people involved in the community.
Yeah, good point, David.
All right. Anyone else have any questions, comments? I will entertain a motion for Jeff.
Right. I guess I could do that. Motion to appoint the, to the Conservation Commission, Jeff Black with a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Can I second? I'll second. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Actually, can we amend it to include authorized use of digital signatures? Now that it is approved?
Sure.
Perfect. And now I'll entertain a motion for Susan.
I'll make a motion to appoint Susan Erickson to the Conservation Commission with the term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Excellent. With a use of digital signatures?
With digital signatures if approved.
Perfect. And Armand, you seconded. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Both.
Thank you for allowing.
Thanks for having us.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Enjoy.
All right. We are going to move back to the public hearing for the street layout. And I, so Greg, if you could tell me for one second, do I need to read the legal notice before the motion? Just trying to, yes, Becky's saying yes. Got it. Um, so the notice is hereby given on Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 at 7:49 PM. Via Zoom remote meeting, which access instructions below, the Board of Selectmen will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 82, Section 22, to lay out the following street, Keene Avenue, as a public way. This layout is scheduled to be considered at the special town meeting Saturday, October 3rd, 2020, and the public is welcome to attend. So do we want, Greg, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah. So this is kind of another step in the process towards making Keene Avenue a public way. So Keene Avenue was, I don't know how, I can't actually, I don't know when it was first constructed, but it, but it's a, it's a develop, it's a subdivision. And, you know, after, after the list, the developer kind of has to go through a lot of requirements to make it up to the right of way conditions that it should be before it can be accepted as a public right of way. Well, so now it has satisfied those conditions. And so now the town will eventually accept it at town. Well, I mean, it's proposed for the town to accept it at town meeting in October. But similar to the process that we did for Rockland Avenue last year, it's the same. The, the Board of Selectmen have to lay out the town, which is just a legal term, to lay, lay out the road to say, this is the dimensions of the road. This is where it is. And we're all kind of agreement about, about what the road is supposed to look like. I do have Town Council Jay Tullerman on the, on the line if he wants to explain a little more or if the board has any questions about this.
No, I like to hear the explanation.
Jay, can you explain? Yeah.
So Greg encapsulated it a little bit. There's really three key components. But before you even get to the three components for roadway acceptance, everything that Greg said is true. Developer works with the planning board to get the approval. They lay out the list of conditions and requirements for the road through extensive peer review. They go through construction and inspection. DPW looks at it on the backend when they're, when they've got it constructed and ready to present for the town to take it from private to public. Every developer wants that to happen. They don't want to be taking care of roadways in perpetuity unless it's purely designated as private. After planning board, traditionally after planning board, DPW, FIRE, those types of entities sign off on the quality of the construction would then go into the three step process. This hearing is the first step in that process. It's a formal thing. It's discretionary. No one can compel the Select Board to lay out a roadway. There is, they could reject a layout for any reason they see fit. But it is a necessary prerequisite. And all it essentially means is that the selectmen look at a plan. I believe you have the plan with you. And they vote to lay it out. That is just the ticket to town meeting, so to speak. Town meeting then would vote as a body whether or not to accept the roadway as a public way and to authorize the Select Board to then accept a deed or to take a deed as the case may be for that roadway so that it becomes owned by the town. Sometimes it's an ownership and fee. Sometimes it's just an easement in the way. Either way, the town takes over ownership of the rights in the way. And then following town meeting, there's usually a period of 120 days, depending upon the nature of things, at which that deed actually has to take, change hands and, or be taken. And that's the, that's the third step. So this is really step one of the formal process. It is the necessary prerequisite to the other two steps.
Thank you. Is there a cost for the taking for the step after the town meeting if it is approved at town meeting?
So generally for roadways, no, if you have to do a taking. Here we're hoping and we're getting, we've been working with council for the, for the developer to make sure that the deeds are in order, that it would just be a donation of that deed. So there would be no formal taking. If in fact we had to take it and would be a friendly taking, and sometimes that happens with older roadways where we don't know all the ownership or where the developer didn't reserve the ownership in the road. And we had to take ownership from each a budding property to the roadway, that can be cumbersome. So we sometimes do a taking. The stated pellet tax board and some other entities have said there's no value in a roadway. So it would be $0 for taking if it came down to that. The only costs and fees are with respect to recording essentially for that process and maybe title exam if it was deemed necessary.
Okay. You, you mentioned that, you know, you've been working with the, the other town, the other council, the Builders Council regarding to make sure the deed is in order and, and everything. So what happens if the deed is not in order and we approve it? Does, is it, is it contingent? Is the approvals, are approvals contingent on that happening?
Exactly. And the, the way it works and the, the town meeting vote doesn't even have to be contingent, although your vote and then the town meeting could, vote could be contingent upon getting good title. But sometimes what happens is we don't even consider title issues until after town meeting. Whether or not the selectmen choose to take a deed, which requires you to literally sign the deed before it gets recorded, is always discretionary. So this could get approved eat, at each step. But then sometimes what happens is there'll be an old mortgage or a weird easement or some kind of encumbrance on the property that they can't clear. And we might have to say, okay, we're just going to put the brakes on this because we're not going to take bad title to it. And it just, it just ends there. But that's why we go through the process. We happen to be doing it on the front end here a little bit. Just was ready for that. And it makes a little bit of sense with this roadway. And there was a little bit of a title issue, not really much of one, but they're working through it. But we should know relatively soon.
Okay, thank you. I, I've asked all my questions. Any other board members have any questions for Jay or Greg or Justin or?
There's no other public hearing after this, no other formal public hearing, the planning board have a public hearing. That's, it's all just here. That's right. The reason I ask that, the reason I ask, the reason I ask is because I, I thought I remember on some of the other road, you know, when roads became, you know, accepted by the town, we had to send out a boatload of certified letters to a butters and residents. Has that already taken place for this meeting or is that something that comes down the road?
Well, that would be if there was a taking. I mean, we're, we're suggesting, I'm not sure how the notice happened here. I wasn't involved in that part of it to know if everyone, all those entities got noticed. That's if there was a taking. It's contemplated here that there's not going to be a taking. So there'd be no requirement for that. As to the planning board hearing, this town, Maynard, does not require a hearing. The planning board did meet to vote and they did vote to approve the taking subject to the clearing of the title issues with respect to a couple areas of the roadway. Some towns do have a road acceptance procedure policy where there is a prior public meeting prior to the Select Board's public hearing, where the planning board would have a public hearing. Here, the planning board just gave their approval at a regular hosted meeting and not a hearing.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions, comments? All right. So this is a public hearing. So do any members of the public have any questions, comments? It looks like Dick Downey does. Do you want to unmute?
Yes. I was curious, does the DPW already reviewed?
Yes. I was curious, has the DPW already reviewed this road and it's met all of conditions of supposed to be, et cetera.
So I think Justin, I, we did get a memo saying that, that, but I believe Justin is on. If Justin, do you want to speak to that?
Good evening, everybody. This is Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. Hi, Dick. Yeah, so the review process, as Jason has kind of alluded to, is it went through peer review through the Planning Board, and within that, the civil engineering aspects are reviewed through our, our Town Engineer Wayne Amico and the peer review process. And the DPW kind of is on the back end of it. So during the road construction, the subsurface drainage construction, and everything related to DPW, including lights, sidewalk, aprons, et cetera. All that was built to what is today's civil engineering standards and was inspected throughout the process. That is part of the Planning Board process, and then that all gets relayed to me. And as the email attached to the packet kind of translate, every, every avenue of what needed to be checked off from the DPW has been executed by the developer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any, any members of the public have any other questions, concerns, comments regarding the acceptance of Keene Ave? Okay. And you might have to help me here. Do I close the public meeting, close the public hearing first, and then we make the motion? Yes. All right, thank you. So does someone, I'll entertain a motion to do that?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion regarding Keene Ave.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen lay out the street known as Keene Ave as more fully set forth on the definitive subdivision plan dated January 6, 2015 by H-Star Engineering, 200 Greenville Road, New Ipswich, New Hampshire. And as further recommended by the Planning Board, and further, that said layout shall be contingent upon receipt of a clean certificate of title from the developer.
Thank you. All right, Chris, thank you for the second. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes. Someone else, that's, someone else said yes.
All right, and I am a yes as well. So thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
You too. All right. Next, we're going to move on to item 10, the Regional Housing Services Office. Greg?
Right. So the Regional Housing Services Office, who is represented tonight, as is most often the case by Liz Russ, the Director, is a collaboration amongst a number of municipalities, and she's, she'll explain it more than I am, but it just is a quick overview. So they're, they're a huge help to the town, as they are to many other towns in our region with our affordable housing business. So in this regards, recently, she's been doing a lot of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for, with the town, but she helps certify the affordable housing throughout the town and developments and whatnot. So she's kind of instrumental in our, in our regular work as, as we're going through, you know, a lot of redevelopment downtown and whatnot. She comes up a lot. So I really appreciate all the work that she does and the consulting that she gives us. In this regards, the IMA, which is Intermunicipal Agreement, amongst all the different towns establishing the Regional Housing Services Office is, is, well, it needs to be renewed. So we just got into this last year, and I think we had, I think we just had like, almost like a side letter. We kind of came in, you know, during the course of a, of an agreement. But this needs to be renewed. So we do have Liz Russ on, and she can kind of introduce herself, give a good overview to the RHSO. I think you've, you've all been introduced to Liz in the past, but she can give another quick overview, and then she can be ready to answer any of the questions of the IMA.
It does look like she has a, is that your presentation list?
Yes, it is. Yep. Yep, there we go. Yep, there it is. Okay. So, yes, so thank you for that introduction. I'm Liz Russ, the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office. I've presented to the Board before, but I think that, you know, the way boards go, like there you have new people on the board, so this is going to be repeat for some, maybe new information for others. So we can go to the next slide. Can I do this, or, or are you? Yep, there you go. Thank you. So as Greg mentioned, so this is the service model of the RHSO. There's nine communities, and it is established through an intermunicipal agreement. It started in 2011. Concord is the lead community, and there are four people in the office, and we are all contractors through Concord. So Concord hires us through an RFP process. All these towns pay into Concord. They have a revolving fund set up through their town meeting where all the money goes. So we're not like a separate entity. We're not a nonprofit. We really are this intermunicipal agreement between the towns. The intermunicipal agreement allows for nine communities, so we are, we are at capacity here. So Maynard did just join this fiscal year. So because of COVID, we had some, some contractual delays and extensions and all of that. So usually the intermunicipal agreement, which is a three-year term, would start at the beginning of the fiscal year for three years. But we had this extension period because of COVID, so this particular IMA really starts October 1st. So, but that is really out of pattern. And so, yeah, so you pay once, and you pay in advance, and you get the services of the office. You see me because I'm the Director, but there's really three other people who, who really do a lot of the work. So the next page is, this is what the work is in general. So this is our work plan, and then I put in, in light blue, like some of the things that are Maynard-specific. But I'll just sort of start at the 12 o'clock. So we do ownership monitoring. So you have some, these would be restricted properties. You have some at Marble Farm that we'll assist with. Rental monitoring, so you have the VIEW, and you have other, and when we talk about affordable housing here, we're talking about, you know, restricted housing, not through the Housing Authority. So this is, this is newer, I think, for Maynard, like the VIEW is new, the 42 summer is coming up, and some other developments in the planning cycle. In terms of inventory monitoring, you know, we're working on, you know, helping with the SHI and adding units to the SHI and, and getting a safe harbor. I think that with the 42 summer, Maynard would get a safe harbor out of that, which is the, the 40B protection. Then we have program administration. So for Maynard is, we, we call it EWRAP just for, for simplicity, but that's the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So we just started that in Maynard, probably like within the last month. And we're, we're getting applicants, and I think probably eight, eight tenants are receiving funds now and, and more in that process. And then local support here. These would be developments that are up and coming, permits to review. You had Coolidge, we made some comments on, the 42 summer getting that marketing plan and the regulatory agreement, a housing production plan is in your work plan for this year. We support the trust as they need. And then on the sort of regional side, and we call it regional program, but really it's things that would be equally shared by all the communities. So everyone would pay the same, if you will. So we have a website. We do sessions and trainings. Well, we used to, when we could all be in one room together and whatever, analysis and reports. So that's very quick, kind of what, what our work plan is. And then the next slide, I don't even know what it is. Yeah, so it's our website. I should, it probably doesn't even have the website name on here, right? It doesn't. So it's rhsohousing.org, and we're in the process now of adding Maynard's information to there. So we have the housing inventories there, and yeah, I mean, I could, I could bring it up on my computer, but maybe we won't do that. We'll do that maybe another time. And so the last slide is just a summary. So it's really a 10-year operation. This was really a something that these communities put together. There wasn't an RHSO model at this stage. It's not a required thing. It was a way to help towns tap into technical resource for affordable housing because it's so episodic. You know, things come up, and then for months, nothing happens. But that way you'd always have, and when it comes up, it's often complicated. The requirements are different, different programs have, have different needs. So a way to proactively monitor housing and optimize the efficiency and to share with your budding neighbors. So I think that's it. We can probably stop the screen share. Yep. So, so the IMA, we come every year to, it was designed so that every year the Boards of Selectmen would authorize the IMA on an annual basis, even though the term is three years. And that was designed that way, so it's very proactive, and you intentionally, you know, opt in every year. And so I think this IMA is probably in your packet. So you, you're, usually we would have all the select board members sign, you know, wet signatures for everybody, but given the COVID, I think that the Town Council has suggested that you just vote, and then we'll get a signature from Greg. And there's also, I think, a chart in there that says what your money is. You've already voted this money in your appropriation, so the money is, is available and is ready to be spent on this. And I know that Megan is working on, you know, already for next year. You know, we're signing the IMA for this current fiscal year, but I think we're already budgeting for the, you know, the, the next fiscal year. So. So I'll just stop there. Take any questions?
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Liz?
I'd just like to comment for, so that, you know, everybody understands. The Liz has been instrumental in helping the Housing Trust. You know, when we first met, I think Liz met with us shortly after, this was like three years ago now, when we first organized as a Housing Trust, Liz met with us. And we soon came to realize that there was a lot more to running a Housing Trust that five volunteers would be able to accomplish with really, you know, direct background. Some of them have direct background in, in affordable housing issues, but some of us don't. And Liz has been extremely helpful, and the, you know, the association that we have with her organization has been, especially as we move forward and have been trying to expand on our affordable housing here in Maynard. It's really going to become even more important to us as time goes on. So I'm, I think, I personally, one of five members of the Board, I'm very thankful to have Liz on board with us, working with us, and have enjoyed her insight and have enjoyed working with her on the affordable housing, and, and I look forward to continuing that relationship.
Thank you, David. Anyone else have anything?
Liz, nice to meet you. Could you explain a little bit about the outreach you do when, when programs such as the Emergency Rental Assistance or units become available in the different communities?
That particular program, I mean, Megan can talk about that. We are really the, the, more the administrative arm. So, you know, we might have some ideas about outreach, but we really leave that to the town because you know your social media outlets, and, and we're best to get the word out.
So I guess I, I was kind of leading into, I, I was wondering if you noticed practices in other towns that, you know, could be useful that were not following along those lines. So I'm not sure if therefore you don't, you don't see that side of things because you're more the administrative arm, or?
Every town's a little bit different, and I do know that it takes a little while for the word to get out to everybody and for people to evaluate the program and to see, you know, if it's going to work for them.
Okay.
In Acton, we're, we're on probably like the fifth month, and we're still getting new applications. So, so it just takes a little time.
Thank you.
Megan, do you want to speak to what we've done to try to get the word out?
Sure. Megan Samudo, Assistant Town Administrator. So the program started, this is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, started about a month ago, as Liz mentioned. To kick it off, we translated a flyer into Brazilian Portuguese and Spanish to try to reach, you know, a wider variety of Maynard residents. And we did a press release. We posted, you know, on our website, on Facebook. We did a direct outreach to our food networks in town, including, you know, food pantries, Open Tables. Liz actually volunteers at Open Table and regularly hands out flyers in multiple languages, so we have a good connection, ongoing connection there. We also reached out to faith communities in town. We did, you know, my Department Assistant Joanna Bellotta is on the line here, and she, she reached out to find, you know, contact information for all the communities of faith, so we could, you know, send the information to them. And, you know, we're just kind of trying to keep reminding people, we, we've been in touch with some of the kind of larger property owners and renters in town, and I'd say the ones that, you know, we have newer projects and ones that we, that we know of have, they have tenants that are taking advantage of this program, or they're aware of it. So, so that's really encouraging. And, you know, we're, we're continuing to look for new ideas. I know the Affordable Housing Trust just, just had a meeting, I think, yesterday, and is probably discussing more ideas. So I'll probably, I'll probably get a note from David or Rick Lefferts, who's the Chair of that committee, to any idea.
Be for me, because I had, I had a work conflict yesterday, so I wasn't there.
Okay. Well, you know, I did share kind of our outreach spreadsheet with Rick, and I know that it was discussed yesterday, and you know, it's just kind of an ongoing kind of PR attempt to, to spread the word on it. But we are, we have, we have a generous, there is a generous amount of money available for this program that was provided through the Community Preservation and advocated for by the Affordable Housing Trust. So it's been a really excellent partnership. And my office has been working with Liz to, you know, just try to get people aware and facilitate, you know, accepting the applications.
So I would say that outreach through the property owners and landlords is a great way. So, you know, where, where there's larger buildings, you know, like in the, in the lobbies, to have the flyers there is, is another opportunity. And the other part is that the, you know, the, the need might continue for some time. So the, the funding might, you know, it's not like it's, it's a problem that's going to go away for some people. And some of the impact and with the unemployment just, just receding now, some, you know, there's increased need now.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the Regional Housing Service Office with an expiration date of June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you, David. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you very much for your work.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight.
For all your help.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Have a good night.
Good night. All right. Moving along to item number 11. Department of Public Works. Justin, would you like to speak to us about the procurement of replacement service?
Good evening, Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. Thank you for having me. So this memorandum is in regards to a contract that would need to be executed by the Board of Selectmen for the purchase of an F-550 service vehicle for the Water and Sewer Department. The allocation of these funds, as some of you may remember, we did a reallocation of several articles from several years past. Some of those articles were fulfilled with excess amounts of cash left over. Others were never executed based off of total cost for the project far outweighing the, the approved cost, et cetera. We did this at town meeting, and the premise behind the combination was to help the department improve its capital equipment upgrades. And this is one of them. As you look at within some of the detail within the memo, right now, we have an aged-out service vehicle that we use for both water and sewer services, the distribution and collection systems. services, the distribution and collection systems, pretty much an everyday occurrence within those systems. Right now, the vehicle is not efficiently designed to meet some of those operations that we are are required to do per DEP. Per those operations, we currently contract those services out to many different vendors. This vehicle would replace two of some of those contractual services whilst providing enhanced efficiency for storage for our current situation, which would provide speed and efficiency in our emergency services that this truck provides within our, within our utility. So we're really just looking to execute this with funds that are already approved through town meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Justin? Regarding this? All right. Then I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the contract with Colonial Four for the purchase of one at 550 with a fit through J.C. Madigan in the amount of $134,836.50 and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Thank you, Armand. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. And moving on to item B, Justin, you're up again.
Sorry, my kids just got home, so I was muting them. So this is, um, this is the second phase of many of our capital improvements throughout the system. As some of the board remembers that we talked in depth at our last water and sewer rate increase about, you know, dedicating line items to capital improvement within the system. We've been highly focused on what is, what we consider water capacity, which is the treatment processes that the town provides. We have three treatment plants. One is Rockland Avenue, one is Old Marlborough Road, and one is our well four treatment facility. Rockland Ave is our workhorse. It is our highest rated water producer, 1.09 million gallons a day. Rockland is also one of our newest treatment facilities in terms of the three facilities. She's actually starting to age out a little bit here and this is representative of that. So in conjunction with our long-term capital improvement plan with water capacity, some of you may know that we're pursuing a new well source, well four A. We are still in negotiations with National Heritage on the impact to the blending turtle habitat that is adjacent to that. But we are moving in the right direction. So as that happens, we've already received approval to borrow for that and we submitted a masterworks grant to help solidify that well onlining. But when that happens, we're actually going to have to shut down well four, which then leads us to only have Old Marlborough Road and Rockland. We need to make sure that Rockland is running as efficient as possible because if we, you know, start to move forward with that onlining and then we fall with issues at Rockland, Old Marlborough Road will not be able to produce enough water to sustain our daily use. So our focus here with our operating cost is to make sure that we facilitate the upgrades that have been needed since 2016 to make sure Rockland is ready to produce while we move forward with well forays onlining. And I would tell you the same thing has to apply when we potentially discuss Old Marlborough Road and the treatment process change over there. At the, at that time, if everything is done efficiently and effectively, well foray and well for treatment plant will be online, Rockland will be online and we will take Old Marlborough Road offline for potentially a couple of years while that treatment process happens. At that point, again, we need Rockland to make sure it's handled and well for, because if Rockland fails, well for, even with well foray, will not be able to sustain our daily average water. So this is a movement towards our capital improvement plan. SCADA systems are pretty much our computer automated systems that run our plants. We have, each plant has an operator. But this is the best way to describe this is if you drive your car, you have a little computer and you have sensors all over it with the little dummy lights that come on when your tire pressure is low or your engine needs to be checked. This automated system allows our treatment plant operators to identify problems before they get into the system. So we have, within these treatment processes, we pump water, it goes through filtration. Some of the treatment processes have chemical injection. Some of them have several filtration processes involved with that. This SCADA system is an automated system that allows each function to work properly per our preset points. So perfect example with Rockland is we have seven different wells at that site. Each well has its own unique water source, it's actual raw water. So when that raw water gets blended together, this system actually starts to fluctuate and deal with it in real time as opposed to an operator having to be there 24/7. These systems were designed to limit the amount of operators required for treatment plants. And they have been very successful, but like any technology, they need to be upgraded and maintained properly. And this is that process.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Anyone have any questions, concerns, comments regarding this?
I got a quick question. Thank you, Justin, for the summary. I remember we did a lot of these SCADA systems back maybe five, six years ago. I specifically remember doing one over on near Bill Cranchis House over that way on whatever that road is called. Mockingbird. But anyway, how do we get around these approvals being through town meeting? With this kind of money being spent, is there a requirement that these be a town meeting vote? Or is, where is this funding coming from that is outside of town meeting votes? Just curious.
Yep, David, this has actually been approved through town meeting through our operating budget. We have capital lines.
All right. So that's all I needed to hear. Okay.
Live from annual town meeting.
Yeah. It's in, it's in there. No.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? All right. So I will entertain a motion.
Y'all approve to, a motion to approve the contract with Woodward and Curran for the installation and related training of a supervisory control data acquisition known as SCADA operating system for the water treatment facility at Rockland Avenue in the amount of And I, and the motion would authorize the use of digital signatures if approved. Second.
Thank you, Jeff and Armand. And all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that is all said. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
All right. Next, we're going to move to special town meeting preparation status. I'll turn to Greg Johnson for that.
Yep, still Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. No, um, I think, I think it's going along well. So Dick Downey might still be on, so he can speak to it as well, the town moderator. But from my perspective, it's, you know, it, we're, we're trying to recreate the magic knock on wood from June. And so far, so good. So the, the layout will look almost identical. Learned a couple of good lessons. I think, I think, I think plans are moving ahead. Becky's office is full of bags of, of, you know, paperwork and she's printing all day and all that. So we're going to fill the bags. I do want to, I want to bring the board's attention to a couple of things. One is because there is a debt exclusion on the warrant for the fire station, which does require two actions, both the approval at town meeting as well as a ballot. And so the, the ballot, you know, in conversation with town clerk, Michelle Jenkins, trying to figure out when to do that, her recommendation, and I'm on board now, is to do that special, to do the ballot at a federal special election in January. Which I know seems kind of a far way off, but it's not that far. I think all this is going to come upon us quick. And so as long as we have, we have to do it, I think, within 120 days of, of the town meeting approval of the, of that. We have to do the ballot within 120 days, which we would if it was in January. But for a number of reasons, primarily logistics and operational, January is a better fit than November or December because there is the presidential election in November. And then anyways, elections are, are no small matter, of course, but particularly this year, the town clerk's office and the election workers have been, well, there's some election fatigue. And so at, at a minimum, we're, we're trying to sort of pace things out a little bit better. The other thing I want to point out was some of the attachments that, that we've gotten within the last, I mean, couple of days even. So not, not to go over in detail right now unless the board would like to, but if you get an opportunity, go read what the, what the school committee has submitted. And what the town moderator has submitted according to his, his preferred voting sequence. And then the master plans hearing committee's presentation that Brendan Chetwin submitted. Those are all, those are all uploaded through your awareness.
So if I may. Nope, go ahead. Finish.
I, I was going to ask if there's any questions or if Dick wanted to.
Okay. My question would be relative to an election in January, a ballot vote in January. What would be the contingency if there is a snowstorm in January on the date of the election, like a major snowstorm? That, are we allowed to set an alternative date? If that's the situation? And if so, when should we set the, first off, we haven't set the initial date for an election, but if we do, we likely should then consider an alternative date. Because January in New England is very unpredictable and our winters and weather seems to be even more so.
Yeah. No, good question. And I don't have the answer right now, but I appreciate you bringing it up. Yeah. So I'll, I'll defer to Michelle Jenkins. We'll, we'll, we'll get those answers to you. That's a great point.
Is there a minimum number of voters we need for, I know we need a quorum for town meeting, but for the election?
I don't know. I don't know.
No.
I think so.
Yeah. Audience says no, but well, I'll get that, I'll get that confirmed.
I never heard of a snow date or a rain date for an election.
That's, that's the issue. That's, my concern, my concern is with something that affects the voters and the taxpayers in such a dramatic fashion. Are we setting it up for a potential problem by having an election in the winter when we could have had beforehand?
The, the, I mean, on a federal and a state level, if it snows or rains, whatever, you got to get there.
That's why I'm saying we have a chance here to, to control when the election is and we can avoid having an issue with weather. Well, potentially, potentially, you don't, you don't avoid it necessarily in November, but it's, it's much less likely to have a major snowstorm in November than it is to have a major snowstorm in January.
I think the problem, David, or the challenge is that, and I've seen this in the town that I've worked in, that I work in as well, is I don't think any of us, until we actually work it, understand the sheer amount of.
I get, I get that. I get that.
And so they, they, I don't think that it would be possible for them to pull together. And I, I mean, Michelle Jenkins is amazing, but, and, and so are the election workers, but I just think that it would burn them out to, you know, to, you know, to a degree we don't want. So I, you know, I, I definitely see your point. And I think actually Dick Downey had a comment he was trying to make also. So I'll see if he had contribution to that.
Well, let's see, there's a chat there about early voting and, and mail-in voting. Is that something that we could do that? So should there be a storm, we would still have enough votes to pass or reject the motion?
I'm not sure what the rules are for mailing.
For municipal election, I don't know if it's been approved for a municipal election. I don't know.
I think, I think regardless, you'll need a.
Can we check that out?
Still, I think you still need a physical polling.
Oh, yeah.
So you still have the weather concern, you know, at the same time.
Yeah, you definitely.
But at least then people could, if, if somebody knew that there was a snowstorm coming on Tuesday and we had prior voting or mail-in voting, you could arrange to get valid in, you know, theoretically.
Dick, you're muted again.
Exactly.
I just don't want to be, I just don't want to put us, my concern is just putting us in a situation where we, we, you know, we have a chance to have an election outside of critical weather time versus critical weather time. When, when's the right time?
Okay.
Yeah.
So can somebody just take an action item to find out whether early voting is possible and?
I think I asked Greg to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
The good news is we still have a little bit of time to figure it out.
Right.
Yeah, Michelle will have these answers. We'll, yeah, we'll get that to you.
And anyone else have any other questions regarding the ballot or town meeting or anything else? At the moment. All right. I want to say that everyone, you know, Dick, Greg, Becky, Justin, you know, everyone is doing an amazing job, Michelle, with logistics and planning for this. You know, it is, it does definitely take a village. But I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's doing and, and the thinking outside the box of making sure the presentations are loaded on the website and things like that. Actually, Greg, I will say that I posted on my private Facebook page just to kind of tell everybody that the Action Unlimited went out and that the warrant was in it. So.
Some people haven't gotten it yet.
But I did have a couple of people tell me that they didn't get the Action Unlimited this week.
Neither have I. So we haven't gotten it yet.
I don't know what happened.
Okay, I'll send a quick email tomorrow.
Yeah. That's why it's on.
A lot of extra. And that's, I linked it to, I linked our, you know, it's already on the town page. So, you know, I linked it to the town page. You can definitely find it by searching town warrant. Our information comes up and you can, and get it there also, but just to let you know.
Wait, just confirm. So some people in town have gotten it, but some people haven't gotten it.
Correct.
Okay, just, I want to make sure that, okay, all right. I don't know. I don't know. We'll find out.
Mine, mine was Action Limited. That's right.
Nice.
All right. Okay.
Your side of town has been funded on.
I'll drop it off for you.
Can you make copies of it? Thank you.
I'll make you copies tomorrow at work.
Thank you. Thanks.
The post office has defunded on your side of town, Armand. That's.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right. So let's move on to the FY21 board goals. I don't see anything. So we have no goals. No.
It was just in case there was any, I just, if in case there was any action we need to take, but that's all about internal.
I wanted to, I just wanted to comment that we did have a meeting on Saturday. It was actually in person. It was nice to see everybody behind town hall. And I really do appreciate the conversation, the collaboration. I think it's important. I think it's important that we did have a lot of conversation and from those we will get the goals. And for anyone who's interested, what will happen is Greg and Megan took a lot of notes and we're going to form them into goals for our board for this coming year. And then one of our goals is to, is to revisit the goals in about six months to really see where we've gone and, and see what we've accomplished. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. Does anyone have anything else to add about that?
I have to say that this, it was probably the best one we've had so far and could be because Jeff joined us, but it was, it was, it was a lot of interaction, of great dialogue. I think a lot came out of it and I, 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 I think was very productive.
Thank you.
Clearly we all work better hungry.
Yeah, we have.
Donuts.
Donuts, cider donuts.
Those are the best.
Yeah.
They were good.
Or you're not getting them next year then. That's fine.
Hold on now.
I, I did appreciate email you sent today, Greg, relative to the finance committee meeting from last night, but there was some additional documentation that was in there that is interesting reading if anybody has not had a chance to read it. But there was some additional documentation that was in there that is interesting reading, if anybody has not had a chance to read it.
Yeah, it was interesting to me too, David.
And, and, and I think we should have further discussion on that. You know, you attached some, some documentation, I don't think it's official documents, but, you know, it's not legal documents per se, but it was the opinion of some guy who was the Chairman of the Municipal, the State Municipal Finance Committee or something along those lines, made his comments about the roles. You know, interesting reading and you can interpret it, I read it several times to interpret it different ways as to what he was actually saying. But based on managed charter, it pretty, seems pretty clear what our role is in presenting a town meeting. But beyond that, the, the, the development of the budget is an inch discussion based on the comments that he was making. But I think that's, that's all part of the conversation we were having on the weekend. And also something that we can continue to have as far as trying to develop on understanding what the role is.
Yeah, it's interesting how that came out after we had that discussion on, on Saturday.
I think it's just coincidence, but yeah, no, you know, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to the Town Administrator Report.
So it's, it's a pretty good report, as per usual. I appreciate all of my departments submitting their, their, their reports for the awareness of the public. I do want to point out one, two, two kinds of things to highlight, because there's always a lot of highlight, but I'll do the two. So one was a question to y'all's answer, an answer to y'all's question last Selective Meeting as to how we've been doing with the Green Communities Grant over time. And so we've been doing very well. So the town has been the welcome recipient of over $1.1 million worth of Green Communities grant funding in the last six or seven years, which is great. So in fact, this year was relatively small compared, but my understanding is like many state programs, the state has a certain agenda. So, and, and whether it starts from the governor's office or the various secretaries and whatnot. But we, we apply according to what that year's worth of guidance is, right? So some years they might have fuel efficiency might be their priorities and whatnot. So we apply for, for projects that could answer that, you know, make us more attractive and be successful in the grant. So this year, it looks like it's a smaller amount, but it's no insignificant amount, $38,000, because it goes a long ways towards our own goals. And one of the, one of the two projects that we got funded, I'm excited about is training for Kyle Brainerd, who's the head custodian, but we're transitioning him to a different role because we hired the director building operations for the schools. So anyways, it's, it's just good to kind of enable and empower Kyle a little bit more, that's good. Anyways, the other thing I want to point out was we were notified that Mass Wellspring, which is one of the two marijuana retail establishments that the board has a host community agreement with. The first being Green Scarf, but this one is Mass Wellspring. And they're proposed to go into, and I don't remember the exact address, but it's on Nathan Street, right at the, right at the roundabout. So the Cannabis Control Commission approved their application following the host community agreement. So in other words, now it's back to us for, for the, the actual license. So we will be reviewing their license application, getting their check for the license fee and whatnot. And then we'll see something back for the board to review when it's ready. Rest of the report is, is pretty thorough, I, I welcome everyone in the public to review it. And I'll welcome any questions that the board has.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions, comments regarding the town report? I mean, the Town Administrator Report. I wanted to thank you, Greg, because I mean, actually, there's a lot to it this, this week. There's a lot of information. I really wanted to actually commend the library, I know we're all, every department's finding the different ways to, to move forward during this pandemic and engage. And the report the library gave of what they have done and what they have run, you know, in the past few months is really impressive and I, I really appreciate their hard work on that.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, the library, did I see that Steve Weiner is also planning a retirement or is that official yet or?
No, that's official, so.
It's not official?
It is, it's very much official because I was just in the publicly posted library search committee meeting last night. So the Library Director Search Committee, so the Board of Trustees have, have reached out to my office and Stephanie Doug in HR to, to start, to start that procedure to find, to find a new library director. So Steve, but sometime after the new calendar year, Steve's moving on.
Yes, Steve will be a big loss for our community. He's done, you know, as you know, he was around when the library came on board at its new location. And has really built that library into what it is and has a great team. And, you know, it's really going to be sad to see Steve leave the leadership role. But good for him going into his retirement.
Absolutely. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, it was chock full of nuts, Greg, your report.
It's a nutty town, what can I say?
It was a lot. All right, moving on to the Chair Report, I have a couple of things. The first is that I was able to, yesterday, Monday, I was able to be present at the swearing in of our three new officers that we appointed at the last meeting. And it was, it's one of those things, I was talking to the chief before, before the deputy chief had gotten sworn in and said that it is, it is really hard at this point in the, in the pandemic where people, we don't get to actually see and congratulate people in person. So we wanted to make it a little bit more meaningful. So, so I just went down and stood while they, I watched the Assistant Town Clerk swear in all three officers and with their families, fresh out of the academy, graduated Friday night and they're on the job on Monday morning here. So, so that was great. I, the other thing, Maynard Public Schools get underway tomorrow. I want to just wish everyone luck. I think that it is, they've done a great job, they're trying to engage with the community, they are, they have a lot of plans. And I really appreciate the amount of work that they've put into this. So, so good luck to parents, kids, teachers, staff, administration, everyone. And then the last thing is, I did notice that, and again, I do realize that Michelle Jenkins is, is out straight. But my one question, this might be for Megan too, is can we put out another social media push regarding filling out the census? Because I know there's like 15 days left and so I was wondering if there's some way we can just kind of capitalize on it a little bit? Awesome, and that's all I have, anyone else? I actually, no, I guess. Sorry. Armand, do you have anything for your report?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I'm sure everybody knows that the Metality is going to be happening this Saturday. And it's a good opportunity for us to take pride.
Metality, Becky.
Metality, not Metallica.
Space.
I didn't see, I said that, Metality, I did say Metality.
Yeah.
What did you get there?
Oh, you did, Becky didn't understand it.
Oh, I thought you said Metallica, that's a different thing. Yeah, anyway, but I just think it's going to be fantastic. The weather sounds like it's going to be great, so it'll be an opportunity for all of us to take pride in all the work that's taking place there. And thanks again, kudos to the Art Director, Jerry Beck. The other thing I had to, and I had an opportunity to meet with Brian Haas, the Superintendent, and I had a fantastic conversation with him. He's a great addition from my perspective to what we're trying to accomplish in, within the school system. He has a great vision of what he's trying to, you know, accomplish. I appreciated all the, the interaction I had with him, I shared some of my concerns with him. He's very open to hearing how we could collaborate going forward and trying to make the whole town a better place to live and a better place to educate our kids. So it was a fantastic conversation I had with him, so I appreciate that. The other thing, and this is on, and I should have saved this for, I should have put this upfront, but this is a little bit of a negative thing. We need to do a better job of informing our constituents, our residents. You see a lot of misinformation on Facebook about certain things that are taking place in town. And I have a feeling, you know, I don't know how to educate the public better than we are at this point in time. And they're, they're, you know, spreading the misinformation and it's not good. I mean, I think we need to, I don't know how we could do a better job. I know Megan has done a tremendous job of trying to get the message out. But it's just something that, it's disheartening and I don't like seeing that, but it's just the way it is. I bet, I bet you with social media, the way it goes. So, but anyway, that's, that was just a concern of mine that I don't like seeing. And then the other thing is, I hear Aviva Trattoria is opening up very soon. So that'll be another addition to our restaurant in town. So it's nice to see that going on too. That's all I got.
Thank you, I actually, I did hear, and I forget who it was, but I did hear that someone was hired for Market Basket. So if they're hiring, if they've actually been hired, it's probably coming soon.
Yeah.
Madam Chairwoman, what, Armand, I'm sorry, peremptive, but who, who did you say opened, Armand, the last one?
Aviva. Oh, cool. You could say Trattoria or Trattoria, whatever you want to say it.
Last thing I saw was they had us, they were looking for a soft opening, the 18th.
Yes.
But I don't know if that's still.
And, and they, and they actually, they're putting out, they're going to have a special VIP for some kind of a contest that you could, you could, you know, participate if you want.
Very exciting. All right, Jeff?
Yeah, I had just a question about the election coming up. I had a conversation with somebody who had previously volunteered the polls but didn't feel safe doing so in the recent primary due to COVID. And so I have two questions. The first one is sort of a direct from that conversation. Is it possible for the upcoming election to put some sort of physical plexiglass or otherwise barrier between the poll workers and the voters as they come into register? Where maybe there's a little gap under for, if there's a paper? And so I don't know if that's been discussed, so that's the first one.
We can look into it.
And then the second one is, do we have a need for more poll workers? If we're seeing, you know, a decrease, I've seen another, you know, more general announcements asking younger people who are, are less susceptible or at risk for COVID or for at least severity. And so do we, do we need to make a push for poll workers in advance of the November election?
I appreciate that and that's probably true. So let me, I'll ask Michelle Jenkins about just, I don't even know how many she may need because, because we, we did it a little bit differently for this last one, because she used both the auditorium and the gym. But that's a great question, so let me, let me see what, what Michelle needs. And then we can post something about asking for election workers or something. That's, I thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, and then I talked to you back a little earlier about the Metality exhibit. He just wanted to know, Justine, if you were planning to come?
That's right.
Just wanted to let you know, he was curious about that, so.
Oh, I, I actually replied to him right after he sent the email us yesterday, so we must not.
Maybe there's a miscommunication, so.
I'll, I'll send the, I'll send the reply again, absolutely. I was wondering why I hadn't heard back from him again.
That's probably it.
All right, thank you. And yes, I will be there, so. Chris, do you have anything?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, David?
Two quick comments, just for people who are looking to attend meetings. Tomorrow night, the exciting solar committee meeting is scheduled for, I think, 5:45 with a group that's working on the, the solar project. And that, that's available on Zoom, I'm sure, it's probably not a huge public meeting, but it's available. And then Monday night is the Budget Subcommittee Meeting, the first one since we finalized the warrant. And that's at 7 o'clock Monday, the 21st. And we're also going to be joined, it's going to be a joint meeting, I think, between the Budget Subcommittee and the Capital Planning Committee.
The newly formed, newly formed Capitol.
The newly formed Capital Planning Committee. And we'll see that, that battle between the Army and the Marines right there, live on.
Same team, same team.
I, I know that same team in the big picture, but I'm partial to the Army, you know.
He's trying to cause the strike.
There's a Navy man on the finance, Tom Black is there.
Yeah.
Is that right? I have a, I have a nephew who is just recently, you know, he just, he just became a United States Naval Sailor, United States Navy sailor, just got to boot camp and is now a Navy sailor. But anyway, so my father would be, my father would be very disappointed to, to hear that. But in reality, he'd be very proud, so anyway, that's it.
All right, sounds good. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Again.
I need to enter, you have to actually make them up.
So I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Excellent, Chris second, Armand second. Everyone wave, everyone in favor, good night.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night, everyone, thank you very much.